Okay. Go ahead.
This conference is being recorded. Only the main conference is recorded.
Good. All right, thank you. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. I'll simply ask if you, at this point, if you're not in position or if you would use your mic. I don't think your mic's open, so we're gonna have to.
And get in front of the, uh, my iPad.
Okay, thank you. With that, can we have a roll call, please? President.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Commissioner Boylan.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Long.
Here.
People.
Present.
Commissioner Griffin. Commissioner Boylan.
Present.
Chair Sodden.
Present. All right, thank you very much for the quorum. Prior to the first order of business, I would let everybody know that there is going to be a public hearing a little bit later in the, in the moment. At that time, if you want to speak or have any comments, I'd ask that you sign up through the chat session. At that time, we'll acknowledge you individually at the appropriate time. Also, the fact that I'm asking to be sure everybody else's mics are mute, with the exception of the commissioners, at the appropriate time. The first order of business is approval for minutes from January 6, 2021. That all the packets were sent out, and I hope all the commissioners did receive them at this point. So if they're, I'll entertain a motion at this point.
A move for approval of the amendments.
A second?
I heard a move from Alderman Boyd, a second from Commissioner Boylan. With that being correct, would you go for roll call, please?
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Bradley Combs. Commissioner Van Hooch.
Aye.
Commissioner Boylan.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Long.
Aye.
Commissioner People.
Aye.
Commissioner Boylan.
Uh, abstained, because I had to leave early.
Chair Sodden.
Aye.
And the motion passes with seven voting aye and one abstention.
All right, thank you very much. With that, again, welcome everyone to the commission, the public meeting. At this point, we're gonna have a presentation by Roman, and then we'll open for public hearing. But prior to Roman, I'll let, I'm invite Don Rowe to open up with some comments or conversation at this point, if you would.
Sure. Good to see or have everybody on. I'll pick a couple sort of housekeeping type things. One is Cecilia is not joining us tonight. As many of you know, February is the month for her, her pregnancy leave, and she's starting her family leave a little in advance of the delivery of the baby. So she has started medical leave and will not be with us tonight. Two of her staff members will be, and that's Roman, who will do the public hearing in that particular item, and Alexa, who will do the other item. Next month, by the way, we will have a new staff member that will report to Cecilia that will be onboard, a fellow named Jonathan Roper, who will join our staff next week and then be available at the next planning commission meeting. Tonight, there's two items. One is a bit of a relook and has a lot of technical stuff from it in that Roman is presenting something that's an element of the Graboy-Jefferson Plan, but it relates to the sloop, which had not gotten ratified at the time of the plan. He'll have some guests with him that can help with that if needed. And then Alexa will do the second item. So the first one is Roman's doing a public hearing. There's public comment, and then, of course, we do an action item in sequence with that. So all for tonight, pretty straightforward, a lot of detail with Roman, but he'll go through quickly. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Don. With that is that we'll have Roman make the presentation. I'll entertain the questions from the commissioners first, then we'll open the public hearing at that point. So Roman, why don't you go ahead and begin your presentation?
Very good. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is a presentation and a public hearing for Amendment Number 22 of the city's Strategic Land Use Plan, or sloop as we call it, which, as you know, is the land use component of the city's comprehensive plan. As the chairman mentioned, I'll start off by making a presentation that will provide an overview of the amendment. We'll next go to the public hearing, and as the slide indicates, the public hearing is accessible for online viewing and comments. So if you intend on making any comments, please sign up. The public hearing will follow our standard rules and regulations. The public notice ads that were advertising this public hearing appeared in the two publications, City Journal and the Daily Record on January 12 of this year, and the background information and recommendations document that Planning Commission members received in their packet was also posted on PDA's website on January 15 of this year, which fulfills the 20-day review period for, for sloop amendments. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission will then have the opportunity to vote on whether to approve Amendment Number 22 at this meeting. The, the map on your right is the current Strategic Land Use Plan map for the city. It was recently updated a couple months or so ago with Amendment Number 21. And essentially, every city block in the city is assigned one of the 10 strategic land use categories that are listed on the legend to the left there, ranging from a neighborhood preservation area shown in yellow down to an opportunity area shown in purple. And as you're aware, the Strategic Land Use Plan is a policy document that identifies the types of land uses that are recommended for locations located in the city at a city block level, as opposed to a parcel level. The sloop was adopted in 2005, roughly 15 years or so ago. It's been amended 20 times since then. And basically, an amendment is changing a site's sloop category from one category to another. There are three types of sloop amendments that have happened at the Planning Commission meetings. The most common is the first type, where action items that were previously approved by the Planning Commission, and those could be redevelopment plans or rezonings or other items. When significant progress has been made on those development projects or when the sloop's adjacency rule was, was used, we collect those and update the sloop on an annual basis. The second type of a sloop amendment is when there's a change in vision for large, underutilized sites that would facilitate a development project. That's been used for a number of large-scale development projects, including Cortex, the NGA complex that's currently under construction, and the La Colina residential subdivision that McBride is building on the Hill neighborhood. And then the third type, and this hasn't been done very often, is changes that have been proposed by neighborhood plans and topical plans. And that's the, the type of amendment that we're gonna be doing tonight. And those sloop changes are based on recommendations that were included in the Graboy-Jefferson, excuse me, Historic Neighborhoods Plan. The image in front of you is the cover of that particular document. And it's a fairly lengthy document, over 311 by 17 pages. And just to refresh your memories, the, the Graboy-Jefferson Historic Neighborhoods Plan was adopted as a neighborhood plan, as well as a supplement to the city's comprehensive plan in May of 2018, so roughly two and a half years or so ago. The purpose of the plan was to guide community development efforts in the planned area. It was prepared by RISE Community Development in conjunction with a number of, of partners, including the Dutch Town South Community Corporation, Urban Works Architecture and Design and Development Strategies. The plan included eight community goals, some of which were non-traditional topics. But these were topics that were important to the community and were delved into. So some of those included items such as safety, youth and education, and, and health. But the focus of, of tonight's sloop amendment is the future development of the planned area. And as part of the adoption of the, the plan back in 2018, in the staff report, staff recommended that a more careful evaluation of the proposed sloop changes that were in that document should be conducted by PDA staff before bringing those proposed sloop changes to the planning commission. Well, we finally got around to it, and we have some findings and, and recommendations that I'm gonna share with you tonight. So the, the map on the right is actually a map that was included in the Graboy-Jefferson Neighborhood Plans document. It identifies the 26 sites where sloop changes were recommended, and those are identified by a black outline around the block or block face. Hopefully, you could make those out. They primarily occur along some of the major streets in the planned area. I should also, excuse me, point out to you that one of those sloop changes was previously approved by another sloop amendment. That was Amendment Number 20 back in September of last year, and that was to facilitate the construction of a 12-unit apartment building by Blackline Development near Jefferson Avenue. So there's only 25 proposed sloop changes that we're looking at tonight. The great majority of those, as I mentioned, are located along the major streets in the planned area. And we've divided those 25 sites up into four geographic groups to make it a little bit easier to, to analyze and provide some findings and recommendations for them. Just by way of orientation, the, the planned area is bounded roughly by Graboy Avenue on the north, Jefferson and Broadway on the east, Merrimack Street on the south, and Grand Boulevard on the west. It includes portions of four neighborhoods, all of Benton Park West, which stretches from the intersection of Graboy and Jefferson to Cherokee Street. It includes all of Graboy Park from Cherokee down to Chippewa. It includes a good chunk of, of Dutch Town, although Dutch Town is a very, very large neighborhood, so a large portion of Dutch Town is not included in here. And that goes from Cherokee down to Merrimack Street, and it includes just a sliver of the Mount Pleasant neighborhood located south of Merrimack Street. The, the map also shows the existing strategic land use categories for the, for the planned area. So as you can see, the, the most common category is the neighborhood preservation area, shown in yellow. This basically is a category that calls for the preservation and infill development of residential uses, as well as corner commercial uses. There's only one block that is designated as a neighborhood development area, which is a designation that indicates a residential area that's in, that's experiencing some struggles. That's located on, on Chippewa Street. A fair number of blocks and block faces are designated as a neighborhood commercial area, shown in pink, and those are primarily along Grand, Graboy, and some of those east-west streets, Cherokee, Chippewa, and, and Broadway. A small cluster of specially mixed-use areas is located along Merrimack Street in what is sometimes called downtown Dutch Town, near the intersection of Merrimack and Compton Avenue. One block is designated as a business industrial preservation area that's located near Graboy Avenue, and it's pretty light. I'm not sure if you can make it out. A, a number of institutional areas are also included, excuse me, including St. Alexis Hospital, Carnahan High School, Merrimack School, and the St. Anthony's Church Complex. And lastly, for recreation, open space, preservation, development area, there are a number of parks located in the neighborhood, including Graboy Park, Marquette Park, and Le Cleve Park. So with that as an orientation, let me move further on here. As I mentioned, there were 25 proposed sloop changes. We've divided those up into four groups. Group A consists of 16 sites that are located along Cherokee Street, Chippewa Street, and Merrimack Street. Those sites, again, have a black outline around the block faces, and they also include the city block number that they're, they're located in. Hopefully, you can make those out. In general, these are streets that share some common characteristics. They're all east-west in orientation. They're all zoned commercially and have been zoned commercially for over 70 years at least, perhaps even longer than that. Some portions of those streets are heavily commercial and have quite a few mixed-use properties as well. Other portions of this street are more residential than commercial. So it varies quite a bit, and we're gonna be looking at those blocks that tend to have a mix of residential and commercial. The other common characteristic is the, these commercial districts have been, for the most part, struggling over the last few decades or so, although Cherokee Street has made a major comeback over the last decade or so, both in terms of commercial development and some spinoff of residential development near there. The second group of, of properties or sites is Group B, which includes three sites located along the eastern boundary of the area, Jefferson and Broadway. And I think one of the reasons for proposing those sloop changes in the document was the proposal to build the, the north, north side, south side metro link expansion, which obviously would change things dramatically for Jefferson Avenue and Broadway. Group C includes three sites located along Graboy Avenue. Graboy is primarily a mix of commercial and some industrial properties. And those three sites are, are located sort of mid, mid-location along Graboy between Jefferson and, and Grand. And then the last group, Group D, includes three sites that are institutional uses, and those are sort of scattered throughout the, the entire planned area and are located geographically near each other. So let me delve first into Group A, which is Cherokee, Chippewa, and Merrimack. The table in front of you identifies those 16 sloop changes in terms of their location, whether it be Cherokee, Chippewa, and Merrimack. The city block it's located on, the number of parcels that are involved, and these are mostly block faces that the changes are involved in, not entire city blocks. And as you can see, the, the current sloop category for most of these sites, particularly along Cherokee and Chippewa, is neighborhood preservation area, which again calls for primarily residential uses and corner commercial uses. And the proposal is to change them to neighborhood commercial area, which emphasizes more commercial development than, than residential. And at the bottom there, for Merrimack Street, those sites are currently designated as specially mixed-use areas, which encourage a mix of land uses, and they're also proposed to be changed to neighborhood commercial. With that, what I'd like to do is to, is to provide a little bit of a, of a flavor of each of those blocks and show some photographs of what you might expect to see, or what you could see on those particular block faces. So this is a blow-up of Cherokee Street, and as you can see, at the eastern end of Cherokee, from roughly Jefferson Avenue to about Nebraska, it's, it's currently designated as neighborhood commercial area. That's a very, very heavily commercial area with both commercial and mixed-use properties. To the west of there, there's a fair number of commercial uses, particularly at corner locations, as well as some mid-block locations. But it's not anywhere near the commercial density that you have at the eastern end of Cherokee Street. So with that, let me go through each of those six city blocks that are indicated on the map. City Block 1498, the western end, includes a one-story commercial building with two businesses. Next to that are three residential buildings that are located in mid-block. And again, these residential buildings, in some cases, don't lend themselves to be converted into commercial purposes, insofar as being stores and shops, but they could be converted into offices and things of that nature. The next block over is at the corner of Cherokee and, and Compton. I think most people recognize the STL Style House that is owned by one of our planning commission members and is one of the anchors of the, that portion of Cherokee Street. A mixed-use building located there. And again, further down that block, along Cherokee Street, you have some residential buildings, which, which look a lot different in terms of their form than what you find at the corner. The next block over is sort of an old-line mixed-use building, and judging by the printing operation, it, the business has probably been there for a lengthy period of time. And the last block on the northern side of Cherokee Street is a muffler shop, which is more auto-oriented that you typically find on Cherokee Street. Excuse me. And again, mid-block, some residential buildings, which may not lend themselves for stores and shops and things of that nature, for ADA purposes and things of that nature. On the southern side of Cherokee Street is, again, a, a mixed-use building on one block, and next to that, on the next block, again, a series of mixed-use and commercial buildings. Photo on the left includes Jerk Soul, a popular restaurant that recently moved from Hyde Park to Cherokee Street, which was Hyde Park's loss and Cherokee Street's gain. Next slide, please. So that's Cherokee Street. I'd like to next move to Chippewa Street. And Chippewa is, is a little different than Cherokee insofar as you'll notice there's a lot fewer block faces that are designated currently as a neighborhood commercial area. That's due to the fact that there's a lot less commercial activity than there is along Cherokee Street. Most of the commercial uses tend to be at the corners, although there are some mid-block commercial locations. Next slide, please. So in the case of Chippewa Street, the, the way I formatted these, and the photos on the left indicate the streetscapes for that particular block, and I may, may include a, one of the businesses located along that streetscape on the right. And that is the former Melvin Theater, which has been converted into a storefront church. The streetscape shows that there's a fair number of, of corner commercial establishments, although the Melvin Theater is located mid-block. Next block over is a, is sort of a block that's not in very good condition. There's a, a, a unoccupied parking lot that's owned by the city at the corner, and a vacant mixed-use building. Next slide, please. The, this particular block has a number of large commercial and mixed-use buildings. The building on the left at the corner there appears to have been commercial at one point in time and has since been converted into residential due to whether poor business occupancy or, or economic reality, is I'm not sure. Next slide, please. And this is a similar block where the first floor has been converted into residences. Photo on the right shows a couple of residential buildings. It's unclear as to whether those were ever used for commercial buildings or not. I should also point out, there's been a number of renovations that have occurred along Chippewa Street that RISE Development has been involved with, where they've taken some buildings that have been fire damaged or in, in, unoccupied for a long period of time. Now, those businesses or buildings are not located in these sloop areas. They've been renovated, and in taking a look at them, it looks like the, the upper floor residential spaces are occupied, but there's been some, a number of the, the units on the ground floor have not been occupied by commercial spaces at this point. It's unclear if that's due to some of the problems associated with COVID or if there's some other issues involved. Next slide, please. The last east-west street is Merrimack Street. And again, this is a little bit different in that the, the five city blocks that are shown at the western end are already a specially mixed-use area, which encourages a mix of land uses. And the proposal is to convert those into neighborhood commercial. I think either of those two categories would work for this area, and since Cherokee and Chippewa are going with the neighborhood commercial, it probably makes a little bit of sense to change that as well. The sixth site is, is located at the far eastern end of, of the block. Next slide, please. Many of you will recognize the Urban eats, uh, building at the corner of Merrimack and Compton. It's been converted into a, it's a mixed-use building. Ground floor has been converted into a food hall and has attracted some popular restaurants, including Taco's La Jefa, which I recommend highly. Next slide, please. Next block over is a medical office building. It's unclear as to whether the second floor is used for residential or, or business uses. Further down the block are two vacant mixed-use buildings, and those are unfortunately some of the types of, of buildings that you see on, on Merrimack Street. On the southern side of, of Merrimack Street, you can see sort of a classic commercial district with both commercial buildings as well as mixed-use buildings. Next block, or next slide, please. And these are two underutilized, uh, mixed-use buildings located next to Dutch Town South offices at Virginia Avenue. And again, further down the Merrimack Street, at the eastern end of the planned area is a small lawn mower shop. So that was Group A of those main east-west streets. Group B is Jefferson Avenue and Broadway, which is at the eastern end of, of the, the planned area. And again, Jefferson Avenue would be along the route of the proposed north-side, south-side metro link route. Next slide, please. First site is the, located at Jefferson and Arsenal, where one of those metro link stations would be located. That current site is currently a community garden, as well as a vacant parking lot. A number of development projects have been proposed over the last decade or so for this site. Unfortunately, none of them have realized that yet at this point, but would be a good location for a, a mixed-use building. It's being proposed to be changed from neighborhood preservation to specially mixed-use. Next slide, please. This, uh, next series of photos is located near the intersection of Broadway and Chippewa and Jefferson. This is a, a sort of a charming, uh, mixed-use district that has sort of never really fulfilled its promise. Everybody sort of likes this area a lot, but it just hasn't made it over the, the top yet. It's currently designated as a neighborhood preservation area, even though it does have a number of commercials, operations. It's being proposed to a neighborhood commercial area. And the last block along Broadway, next slide, please, is two vacant lots that are located between St. Alexis Hospital and Carnahan School. And given the fact they're located between two large institutional uses, neighborhood commercial, probably makes a little more sense than, than neighborhood preservation. The third category, Group C, are three sites that are located along Graboy Avenue between Arsenal Street and, and Cherokee Street. There's no common pattern amongst the, their current sloop categories or their proposed sloop categories. The, the first site is City Block 1470, which includes a fabricating shop that is located in the red brick building on the left. Included also in the proposed sloop change are the two residential buildings that are located next to it. And I gather that they were included just to provide a little more space if necessary for expansion for that particular business. Next slide, please. Next location is located at Graboy, near Compton Avenue's, a major crossing point for Graboy. Currently located there are two vacant commercial buildings. One was a former car wash, and the second was a, a former muffler shop. Given its location along Compton Avenue, it's located on a triangular-shaped parcel. It's being proposed to be changed to a specially mixed-use area. And then the last site along Graboy Avenue includes a number of businesses, as well as some adjacent residential buildings. So the photo on the left shows, shows a Chinese restaurant and cell phone shop and a used tire operation on the right. Again, a number of residential buildings adjacent to these businesses have been included to be changed from neighborhood preservation to, to neighborhood. to be changed from neighborhood preservation to, to neighborhood commercial. And then the last category is Group D, which are three sites that are scattered throughout the study area. The first is the Salvation Army Temple Core Worship and Community Center that's located on Arsenal Street, identified there by City Block 1757. It's currently designated as a neighborhood preservation area. And again, because of its institutional use, it's being proposed as an institutional preservation area, it's currently a neighborhood preservation area, excuse me, being proposed to an institutional. The, the Graboy Jefferson Neighborhood Plan recommended that two entire parcels and two portions of two other parcels be changed to institutional. And looking at the site, we discovered that there are actually eight parcels that make up the Salvation Army complex. So we're recommending that all of those eight parcels be changed to institutional rather than what was included in, in the report. So that's a minor technical change that we're recommending. Next slide, please. The, oh, I'm sorry. These are photos of Salvation Army complex. Next slide, please. The second institution is the Last Days Apostolic Church, which is located on Pennsylvania Avenue, just north of Cherokee Street. This is a former Masonic hall that's been converted into a church. And again, it's currently designated neighborhood preservation and the proposal is to change it to institutional. And then the last site is located along Merrimack Street. This is a former funeral home that's been converted into, I guess mostly offices. And it's owned by Youth in Need and they operate a head start operation at that particular location. So in all three cases here, we, we have locations that are designated as neighborhood preservation and we're recommending as the, as the neighborhood plan did to change those to institutional. With that, in, in terms of comments, what I'd like to say is that the proposed loop amendment would facilitate the preservation and development of this plan area that is in conformity with the Graboy Jefferson Historic Neighborhood Plan's recommendations. Essentially, we're endorsing what was recommended in that neighborhood plan. And PDA staff is recommending the approval of Loop Amendment Number 22 as listed in the four tables in Exhibit A in your particular document. I'd be happy to answer any questions or if you'd like, we could hold off on questions and go to the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Roman. You have done a yeoman's job at getting this and building this up for the presentation. So thank you for that. What I would like to do is first just have the commissioners go through our questions as we normally would, then open it up for public hearing. I think that may save some question, you know, that may share or save us some space there. With that, as a, as the commissioners know, I'll simply go down role to give you an opportunity to either ask your questions or, or no, or no questions. Beginning with Alderman Boyd, any questions to the plan?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Benton?
No, very thorough presentation, no questions for me.
Alderman Conas here.
Oh, welcome Alderman Cone, welcome. Definitely wanted to have, you have an opportunity to express any questions that you have, Alderman Cone.
You, I mean, you can go through the rest of the list, Chairman. I just wanted to let you know that I'm here and I, I can be at the end, thanks.
Okay, we'll come back to you then, thank you. Commissioner Boaz?
No questions, well presented.
Thank you. Commissioner Bradley?
Great presentation, Roman, no questions.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Long?
My only question, and help me understand, who is bringing the changes forth? Is it being recommended by staff or are the neighborhoods bringing the recommended changes forward?
So that's a great question. This is Don. As Roman's given you all this detail, I want to, one, in essence, apologize to the neighborhood, there are some people that are involved in the plan, that we didn't make this approval at the same time as adopting the neighborhood plan. As Roman said, wanted to do a little bit more scrutiny of it and in essence, it's taken us a while to do that, apologize for that. But really, the answer to the commissioner's question is this are all but one that Roman mentioned at the end, are proposed in the neighborhood plan, done with consultants, done with a lot of stakeholder input, a lot of review. And Roman has now done an analysis just as a, as a check on that with the recommendation from us that this be adopted as a change to the sloop, but really as also a key part of the neighborhood plan.
Okay, and I thought of one more question. Are we voting all of them as a complete package tonight? And I agree that this was a very thorough presentation, I appreciate that. Is it a complete package when we vote?
We intended for it to be that way, yes.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Right, thank you, Commissioner Long. Commissioner Peoples?
No questions, very good presentation, Roman.
Thank you. I'm not sure, Commissioner Goodman, are you on? Okay, Commissioner Vines?
Yeah, two quick questions. Excellent presentation and it's, it's great to see all the thorough considerations being given. I have, my first question is, I noticed that on the Cherokee Street section, there were a few commercial buildings that were, it looked like they were kind of surgically ignored from the rezoning and I just wanted to know why that is. For instance, next to 1502, I think it was, which, you know, coincidentally includes the building that my business is in. Next door, the building is included in the, in the outline of the rezoning and then there's a small commercial building next to that that is, you know, kind of conspicuously left out. And then the building next to that is also included. So I wanted to know what the reason is for leaving certain parcels out.
Yeah, sure. I, I'm not sure specifically of, of the, the block that you're referring to. I certainly know where your shop is located at Cherokee and Compton. The, the intent of the, of the photographs was not to document every single building. I did take a look at what the assessor's office had listed as being, what, what the use was, but based on past experience, that isn't always accurate. Some of these buildings, particularly along Cherokee and then east of Jefferson along Cherokee Antique Row are very, very fluid. They may have been commercial for 10 years and then they got converted to residential and then 10 years later they changed again. So things change a lot. But I took photographs just to present sort of an overview of what is located along that strip. So my intent was not to, I, I think you were sort of implying that I was including some buildings and not including others to try to reinforce the argument for why the, the change should happen, so.
Oh, no. I really wasn't. I honestly, I just saw the map. In the presentation, there is a map and it showed a couple, you know, consecutive building, commercial buildings fronting Cherokee Street. They were outlined as part of this rezoning proposal. And then there was one that was just, it was very conspicuous that it wasn't outlined. It was like skipped over and then one next to that continued.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, I got you. Scott, could you go back to Slide 10?
And Roman, while you're getting your bearings on that, it's good to remind ourselves that this is the Strategic Land Use Plan, which is the aspiration for the future, not specifically the zoning. And in some cases, the zoning already matches what is going to be in the Strategic Land Use Plan, which the ripple effect of that would be if somebody came forth with a Chapter 99, we'd now be able to approve the Chapter 99 to match the zoning.
Gotcha. And I just answered my own question because I see now that those are residential buildings in between 1502 and 1506, they're, they're, they're homes, they're residential homes. So I answered my own question, sorry, it just threw me off for a second.
No, let me, let me just add, add to your comments there. The reason that particular block between City Block 1502 and 1506, which I think all of you can see now on your screens, is that was not included in the proposed sloop changes included in the Graboy Jefferson Historic Neighborhood Plan. So we only looked at sites that were recommended for changes. If no changes were recommended, I didn't look at those particular blocks. So in essence, I think what you're saying, Commissioner Vines, is that the folks who put together the Graboy Jefferson Plan made a good decision in not to include that particular block as part of this particular sloop change.
Thank you, yeah, that, I should have known, I should have paid closer attention. My, my, my other question is, I guess for counsel, do I need to recuse myself since I own a business that's located in one of these proposed changes, changes parcels?
We get to, to the attorney at this point.
Okay. And you can get back to me, I don't want to hold up the session here.
Yeah, we, we will come back to that.
Sure.
Right. One additional thing I would remind us, if we were doing at the time of looking at the entire neighborhood document and plan, there'd be a company map that was about the zoning, it'd be in a greater context. So prior to Cone coming up, I do want to ask if you want to speak during the public comments, public hearing, if you would register through the chat so that we could identify you appropriately. With that, I would invite Alderman Cone to come on and give us some, some comments because this is in, in party's ward.
Am I here?
Yes, live and in living colors, sir.
Okay, I, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I really appreciate the opportunity. This is obviously something that's very near and dear to myself and many of my constituents. You know, this is just really wonderful to see and I can't wait for us to continue the efforts, Don and Roman and other parts of Dutchtown as well. You know, certainly happy though that we're finally at a place where some of these efforts are augmenting the other efforts within the community as well. So thank you for all of the efforts on the part of the staff and certainly my, my community members as well and their input and hard work getting this done.
Thank you, Alderman Cone. With that, Roman, does, do you want to acknowledge those that are part of the, either the plan? I noticed there's some representatives from RISE here prior to opening the.
Well, I, I spoke with two representatives of the Dutchtown South Community Corporation, invited, well, first of all, I wanted to make sure they were aware of the public hearing tonight. They recently had some staff turnover, the previous director left within the last two months or so. So we had some communication problems being able to reach them. I invited them to attend the public hearing and asked them if they were interested to participate in the public hearing, but they're welcome to do that or they're welcome to make any other comments if they'd like. There are also, my understanding is two members of, of the staff of RISE Community Development are also on this phone call. Again, I'm not sure if they want to make any comments, they're certainly under no obligation to, but I'll leave that up to them.
So we'll hold that for the public hearing then. At this moment, I will then call for a public hearing and a motion to open that from a commissioner.
I'll move.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bradley, seconded by Alderman Boyd, I believe.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, call for, vote for public hearing.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Commissioner Benton?
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Vines?
Aye.
Judge Fowler?
Aye.
And you have all present voting aye.
Thank you. At that point then, at 6:17, public hearing is open on this date, the 3rd of Fe- February. I do see one registered person, Ann McDonald, please, Ann, you have, if you would, you're more than welcome to speak at this moment. If yours, oh, no public comment, okay, thank you. Joe, we invite Joe to come on if there's any public statements.
Thank you, I'm actually just present to speak if there's any questions regarding item seven tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jamae Brock, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, I'm sure I'm not.
Yes, you did, thank you. Yes, I just wanted to say on behalf of Dutch South Community Corporation, very excited about the future of the Graboy Jefferson Historic Neighborhoods. And if approved, recommendations approved, this would be a great tool for us to use with our development review committee and future development projects.
So Ms. Brock, would you mind introducing yourself? You're new to the position, I believe.
Yes, I, my name is Jamae Brock in Graboy Jefferson Catalyst at DSCC. I've been at the organization for a year now and I've been learning more about the Graboy and meeting with different community partners. This is my first time attending a planning commission, of the city's planning commission. So I was, I learned a lot tonight. And I will also be getting in touch with several of the law at the city, just to introduce myself and to build relationship as far as the development aspect, development review aspect of our Graboy Jefferson Plan.
Thank you, Ms. Brock. With that, I invite Ann, Anastasia Allen, the ED for Navigate St. Louis, please.
Hi, yes, my name is Anastasia Allen. I am the executive director for Navigate STL Schools. It was great to attend this meeting. I don't know that I have comments on necessarily the substance, but the goal for the organization is to really find ways to help families understand the great school options that they have in the city of St. Louis. And part of that is families wanting to purchase homes and relocate back to the city. And so I would love to find ways to connect with this group to highlight some of the great things that are going on in St. Louis city and find ways to use that to encourage more development in terms of people purchasing houses and young families wanting to remain here.
All right, well, welcome and thank you for your comments. With that, I have not identified any other additional comments on the public forum at this point. Additional comments going once, additional comments going twice, seeing no registered additional comments. I entertain a motion to close the public session at this point.
So move.
Yeah, can.
It's been moved, seconded by Commissioner Boyd, I mean Alderman Boyd and Commissioner Bradley. Call for vote.
Previous role.
Call for previous role, hearing no objections. Hearing no objections, we're closed to public hearing with previous role at that point. Then the action item, Roman, I would leave it up in your hands at this point to make the recommendation and call, and then I'll call for both.
Very good. With, with that lengthy presentation, I'll just make a few short comments with regards to the adoption. And we'll repeat that the proposed sloop amendment, Number 22, would again facilitate the preservation and development of this plan area and that it's in conformity with the recommendations that were included in the Graboy Jefferson Historic Neighborhood Plan. So staff is recommending approval of Amendment Number 22 as listed in the four tables in the Exhibit A of the Planning Commission Resolution that, that are before you. And if the resolution, or if the resolution is approved, PDA staff will take care of the follow-up tasks of updating the sloop map, posting it on the website and notifying the relevant city departments. And then just as a refresher, the four tables are listed on the next two slides, if you could advance those. Scott, so those are the, the first slide there includes the 16 changes located on Cherokee, Chippewa and Merrimack. And then the next slide shows the proposed changes to Group B Jefferson Avenue and Broadway, Group C Graboy Avenue and Group D, the scattered site institutional uses.
Thank you, Roman. With that, and just for information, all this information is available online at the city website if you want. city website if you want this presentation available too. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to accept the recommendations of the staff.
Don't move Commissioner Long.
Second. I had a move from Commissioner Long, a second from Commissioner Boaz, I believe. With that, call for vote.
Previous roll.
Call for previous roll, do I hear any objections? Hearing no objections, it is approved with previous roll. Roman, again, let me thank you on behalf of the commissioners, when you bring such thorough and detailed information, it makes our job that much easier in our reading and preparation. So, thank you very much for that, Roman.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. With that, the next item that we have, I believe, is Alexa, if I'm correct.
So, as Alexa comes to the podium, I'm going to tell you guys that alumni of Dutch Town South, Amanda Collins-Smith, has taken a great new job in the city of Philadelphia. She's starting to position as Community Engagement Director for Rebuild Philadelphia. So, well-trained in St. Louis and off to Philadelphia.
All right. So, good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I will be presenting on the thirty-six oh one to thirty-six oh nine, Lindo Boulevard Redevelopment Area. But you can see the project is located in the Covenant Blue Grant Center Neighborhood and it's just over an acre. The proposed developer is Neighborhood Properties LLC and I believe we have with us tonight the president, which is Fernando, Mr. Fernando Cepeda. It is located in the nineteenth ward and the proposed developer plans to renovate the area in two phases. In phase one, they plan to renovate an existing building into market rate units with commercial space by just a little over seventeen thousand square feet. And also, in the second phase, they plan to construct a new residential tower into one hundred and eighty-seven market rate units. The project is located in a special mixed-use area. This is the current building that is to be renovated, which is called a Jesuit Hall and it's fourteen stories. So, this is a site plan of the area, the, the area that's outlined in yellow is what will happen in phase one. As you can see, it's the existing fourteen-story building with also a four-story parking deck, which will be converted to one hundred and thirty-two parking spaces. And then outlined in red is what will be constructed in phase two, which is a eleven-story apartment building, a garage and also there will be a four-story parking deck. And this is just to kind of get you situated as to where the project is located. As you can see, there's a lot of nice amenities around the redevelopment area. So, to the north, we have the Big Brothers Big Sisters Building. To the east of the area, we have a sculpture garden and the Blue Dog Park. Also to the south, we have Francis Xavier College and then also southeast is the Blue Fountain Park. So, P-Day staff recommends that this area be declared blighted and we also find that proposed blighting study and redevelopment plan is in conformity with the Sloop Special Mixed Use Area. P-Day staff recommends approval of the proposed blighting study and redevelopment plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions and if we have Mr. Fernando Cepeda on the line and I believe his colleague Adolphus Pruitt might also be here with him.
All right, thank you, Alexa. Prior to the commissioners' questions, I'd invite any of the stakeholders to make introductory statements and comments prior to our questions, if there are. Adolphus?
Yeah, no, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we just look forward to turning this building around again. It's right now currently is housing members of the Jesuit Order, they're getting a new facility on Sloop Campus. We're going to help facilitate them getting that facility with the purchase of this building and also offer them the ability to lease the space back virtually free until their building is done and then immediately go into renovation on this building. So, one thing that all the women is excited about is that this building won't be sitting along there on the corner of Granite and the vacant because immediately once it's vacated by the Jesuits, we will start renovation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pruitt. At this point, keeping in mind that they're available for questions, I would ask prior to the commissioners coming to the staff, again, to reiterate, last week, we, last month, we asked that at least another bit of information be added to the summary page, which is simply the older person's name and any stakeholders that would be involved in any project that comes before us, so we can avoid any, any issues of conflict at the beginning. With that, let's begin our questioning. Commissioner Alderman Boyd, any questions at this point?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Alderman Cone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been getting tagged in various posts related to this development and the developer and I had some conversations with individuals who sit on the LCR A board relative to those, specifically the back taxes that are owed by this developer on other properties that they own throughout the city and whether or not those have been paid.
Yeah, no, you know, we, we heard it from LCR A, we've asked the commissioner who brought that forward to send us information as, as relates to that. And I think in most cases, when we looked at what it was talking about, it demonstrated that in essence, those taxes have been paid, but I think Mr. Fernando Cepeda can talk to a little more in detail.
Yes, I got a list from, from Michael regarding the properties. Most of those properties, one, we don't know and two, the taxes have been paid in those. They're sitting, they're waiting to be processed and from, if you deep, 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 dig in, deep into the records, we've paid over two hundred thousand dollars in taxes on properties that we do currently own. So, it's just a matter of delay from the city processing them. They're not severely, they're, they're, most of them are properties that we closed either this year and they're twenty-twenty taxes. So, all those have been taken care of and we're just waiting for them to reflect on the, on the city records.
Mr. Chairman, Zachary Wilson from LCR A is, is with us. Zach, might you outline the process that we're at the redevelopment plan stage and the, and the specific developer will not, the process for them getting designated will occur when?
Yeah, thank you, Don. The process is, this is the first step where we find blight and create a redevelopment plan is going through the Board of Aldermen currently. The second process could be several months from now, it would be, the developer would send a pack into LCR A to be designate developer for the area and that's when we should do more little due diligence on everything. So, this, the back taxes and some other things could be flushed out more and be corrected before we designate them developer.
Okay, thank you, Zachary.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to add just one other quick comment and it's, it's, I think it's, it deserves to be saying, you know, when we went before LCR A, that was the first time that we heard about this issue and this issue came up. You know, I don't know what the practice is, but I think it would be beneficial for all if we can receive notice about issues, anybody, if they had those sort of concerns prior to the meeting and that gives us the ability to do some due diligence and bring to the, to the, to the table some evidence that actually show whether those cases exist or not. And in this case, we, we didn't have that opportunity before LCR A and had I known in this meeting that this issue came up, we would, we easily would have provided the necessary information to basically give you all the commission ability to ascertain whether this information is factual or not. And so, I, I just think moving forward, I think we, I think anybody that comes before this commission or any other commission, the commission has that, has those sort of concerns and has that information, I think it would do us, it's more fair to give us opportunity to get that stuff here to town.
So, let's remember for all is that we're, want to engage in community's discussion. What has come to us is a packet of material from LCR A and is for this redevelopment plan and we appreciate that the developer has, potential developer has joined us and be part of the discussion, but the materials for us come from LCR A, so.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that, Don. I've been a part of this planning commission for probably the better part of a decade now. I'm very familiar with that, but also I believe that, that was Mr. Pruitt who was speaking earlier about setting expectations and reaching out beforehand. I might add to that, if you're being asked that question at one commission or committee, expect to be asked that question at every commission and committee meeting, so be prepared in advance. So, you just clearly articulated that you had had that question posed to you at LCR A, you know, and you've had the opportunity since then to address those concerns and bring them to the table with you with the resolution at this committee. I would also encourage you to be prepared for that type of question at the Board of Aldermen as well. So, you know, I, I, I don't think that you should be surprised by that question coming up at the Planning Commission when it had already been brought up at the LCR A Commission as well. So, and since that LCR A Commission, it sounds as though you all have taken steps to try and remedy that and so you should have a list of all of the properties that your partnership and/or affiliates are, you know, involved with and what their tax status is. If that came up at one commission, it could potentially come up at another commission meeting and like I just said, I would not be surprised if it came up at a Board of Aldermen Committee hearing as well. So, I would fully expect you all, especially now that I'm kind of putting you on notice, to have that information available in the future.
And I would expect, as Alderman mentioned, is that at the, at the committee hearing at the Board of Aldermen, the range of topics and concerns that they will have as to the, the aspects of how this affects the city is as broad as can be, so.
So, would you like us to submit all this documentation beforehand, once we come again?
You'll be looking before us again, but I think the heads up from the Alderman is, there's a public hearing and you're asked to pass, most likely at HUDs, bring, bring, be prepared.
I mean, it'll, it'll be at HUDs or Neighbor Development, one of the two, and I'm Vice Chair of Neighbor Development and.
I hope, I hope by that time it reflects, you know, on the city website and, you know, I, I mean, I.
Well, I'm, I'm actually requesting of this, of you and Mr. Pruitt to compile a list of the properties that you currently own or are affiliated with through LLCs with their current tax status as of the time that you have that meeting at the Board of Aldermen. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Pruitt.
I, I just want to interject real quick, they have already appeared before HUDs and the bill has passed out of HUDs committee.
So, and I would, I would also like to add though as well, first of all, I, I think rules of decorum, I'm the one that has the floor currently, the chair recognized me and everyone else just keeps chiming in, you know, always open to input, but you know, a certain order of decorum would be nice. So, if that could be respected, I'd appreciate it.
Well, let me say this, I apologize, I thought you were finished, I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
And, and to my colleague from the twenty-second ward that wasn't geared directly towards you, you weren't the only one that chimed in during all of this. So, it was a general comment since I've been interrupted a few times here. So, the, the other question I have, which I would, I guess since Zach is on the phone. So, Zach, this, this property was owned by the Jesuits, right? And so, it currently hasn't been on tax rolls and this is, I'm pretty sure I already know the answer, but want to make sure that, you know, we're clear with respect to how these things work. So, even though it hasn't been on the tax rolls, it has been appraised and assessed, it's just that it's currently owned by a nonprofit and so therefore they don't pay taxes on it. But in the event that this were to, you know, receive any type of tax incentive, whether that's abatement or TIF or, you know, anything, I mean, I'm just using this as a generality, they continue to pay taxes, but it would be based off of the current appraised or assessed value pre-improvements, correct?
Correct, the, yes, it's taxed exempt currently and once it's purchased, the assessor will assess it at the new purchase price and then go from there. So, they'll be taxed off of that. So, a tax abatement based off the new assessment.
I just want to be clear for anyone that's watching, that once it enters into private hands, even if it does receive any type of tax incentive, that they will be paying taxes on it, whereas this property was not contributing to the tax rolls prior.
Correct, and it scored five out of five on the model because of such an increase into the coffers of the city because of, was a tax exempt property before.
Correct, great, and I would suspect, yeah, all right. Thank you. I mean, I think anytime that we can get, you know, particularly a large property like this back onto tax rolls is a great thing. You know, I'm generally very supportive of these projects and so, but, you know, it has been brought to my attention that there are some concerns relative to back taxes. So, you know, do want to be sensitive to that at least, but thank you for the clarification, Zach. I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Cone. At this point, let me remind everybody that we, you know, as you asked, we will be respectful. This is one stopgap in the process of what they're going through and when questions arises that it does prepare them for the next stop. With that, Commissioner Banton, any questions?
Yes, handful of questions. So, last week, a map was shared with me of properties that are suspected to be owned by this developer, Mr. Cepeda. I don't know if you can see my screen right here, but overall, over sixty properties, a lot in North St. Louis, Dutch Town area, interesting that they're in majority black neighborhoods in the city, I think. And there's one, including one two blocks away from me where I live in the West End on Kate's Avenue, where we've had a neighborhood meeting with Mr. Cepeda here before and that property was subject to a lawsuit from the previous owner and we were excited to see Mr. Cepeda purchase that property and we talked with him and made some promises there which have yet to be fulfilled. Currently, there's been some demolition work and trash is just piled up on the side of the building. And I've heard multiple reports from issues across the city that the properties that, that are owned by, by this development group are likewise sitting in a deteriorating condition and are subject to, to the scrutiny and disappointment of, of many neighborhood organizations. So, now as we're considering a fairly high-profile property in the central corridor, while these other properties sit being untouched, it makes me question the commitment of the developer to redevelop these other properties to do this, this fancy project and grand center and what exactly is the developer's intention and why is there seem to be so many multiple properties being bought up quickly across the city?
Who are you posing your question to, Commissioner Banton?
Mr. Cepeda.
Well, I mean, you've seen that Kate's property and they've been working on it. We stopped working there about a week and a half ago and what's on the side of the building is steel. The demolition has been complete, there is now power on site. We, I, I don't know if you were in the email chain that was sent, my response two days ago to the email from your attorney, I think it was. I attached pictures of, of how the, each plate had been completely clear because of the way it was built. The concrete is, is, is pretty much deteriorated and uneven. And we had anticipated that prior before already. And we aren't able to pour concrete because of the weather, because it's, it's pretty much, it's an inch and a half of concrete that needs to be just to level out those plates. So we haven't been able to proceed with anything else. Anytime that you would like to go and walk the job sites or walk any of our other developments, I'd be more than happy to, to go with you and show you the work that we've been doing. I don't know where these, we've taken over a lot of problem properties in, during these past couple of months. Most of them have been delayed, one because the city is taking over six months to approve, to approve permits. Some of, we have a lot of permits in, in the works right now. As a matter of fact, Kate's, the permit expired during the, during COVID and we had to resubmit the permits again. And that took five months pretty much to, to happen. So I don't, I don't know, you know, and I, we've inherited a lot of these problems because we've taken, we've purchased properties from other, from other people that have had problems. So I, I, I don't know where they're saying that these, these projects have been stopped or and if you live down the street, you've seen all the people that have been there and the tons, tons of debris that have come out of there and the guard and the dual and the pickup of, of, of those containers twice a day. So, you know, it kind of surprises me that all this stuff comes about when, you know, we rehab a lot of properties throughout North City. You know, there's a lot of people that live in, in our buildings that are beautiful, you know, that are, were in dilapidated conditions, people living without water, without electricity, without furnaces, and now have a very nice place to live. So I, I think it's kind of unfair that you guys are, you know, I don't know where these are, where this stuff is coming from, but we've made great efforts to fix all these properties and invest millions of dollars into the city. So I really don't understand why, why, where all this comes about, you know, I mean, it's, it's kind of but that's just, you know.
So my, my follow-up to that would be, you know, I, I, we certainly do appreciate developers coming and investing in the city. I think that's great. And I'm sure there are multiple properties that you've done that, that have turned out well. But we have had issues with past developers in the city that have bought up a whole bunch of property and then sit on them and let them deteriorate. And we are a city scarred by that. So my concern for this large project is that it's going to be at the expense of these other small projects that you have, seem to have dozens. And my question is, why is there, why, why so many at one time?
We've been here since 2016. We required, I mean, we're, we're close to 200 employees. We're not a mom and pop shop. You know, we, we don't just because, you know, we, we're not very public with what our organization is, but, you know, we have over 150 employees on, on the construction and you know, that are on our payroll. We're moving to a new 18,000 square foot facility in, in actually right up the street from this development next to, next to the VA Hospital. So, you know, we have a lot invested in, in the city, you know, we're not here to, we're not speculators, we're not flippers. You know, we're here to stay and we believe in the city. So, you know, I mean, even through the pandemic, you know, we almost tripled our workforce, you know, so we kept everybody on board and, and we've grown. You know, we've grown everything, you know, we tested the waters like when we initially met and I, I, I gave you guys the, the presentation of what we were doing. You know, all that, all that takes money and time, you know, it's not just about, you know, just doing these things to do them either, you know, so that, that's, we're, we're very well aware of what we need to do and we're very well funded to do what we need to do and accomplish all these projects.
Moving on to the, this particular development itself, you have a parking garage proposed sort of the north side of the building. What is going to be, is there going to be anything on the ground floor of that parking garage?
Yes, it's a planned commercial space on the, on the, on the first floor. Kind of when we were having discussions with the Alderman, which is the same, our same goal is that it's tying that, you know, that street with the Boys and Girls Club and engaging that, you know, walkability and people be able to walk and, and interact and, and kind of connect that whole grand center area.
All right. Well, I mean, to be honest, I'm still a little wary personally, just with the amount of work you seem to have going on elsewhere. But no further questions from me at this time.
Also, I would like to note that
I'd like to hold on, Mr. Sepeda. Commissioner Blass?
No questions for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Bradley?
I have no questions. I think everything was answered. I, I did have a concern where the existing residents we're going to move to, as Mr. Pruitt addressed that, a new building is going to be built by SLU or on the SLU campus. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Lo?
Just a couple of questions. Can you walk us through a little bit of the timeline about that move, about when the current residents would be relocated, when construction would start, and when you would be able to see more people and, and, and move toward project completion?
You're speaking to, who's your question to?
I suppose the developer.
Mr. Sepeda?
So they're, they're set to complete their building 18 months out. That's why they, they're part of the negotiations with them was that they, we give them a dollar lease for the, for an 18 months period. So they, they would just, it would be a seamless transition. And then we would start construction right after, right, right after they, you know, they, they move out and they vacate the building.
And so then in the construction phase, how long is that taking you? And who, go ahead.
It would be 18 months is what we have set for construction.
And who do you envision when, when the renovations are, are done on, on this? Who do you envision is, is moving in here? Or who are you catering to?
Young professionals, grad students is, is our target demographic.
Could you clarify, Commissioner Bannon asked about the ground floor, and I, I don't know if I just didn't catch it. What, what kind of ground level activity to activate some of that space down there?
So there will be several white box shops. We're trying to engage a diner, a coffee shop, something that serves the area. And those are the kind of tenants that we're looking for on that first floor.
Okay. This is a question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for either you or for staff. And sorry to be repetitive for maybe one last meeting. I appreciate that we have included who the Alder person is in the ward. Some exhibits come to us with actually written letters of support. Granted, Alderwoman Davis is sponsoring the legislation that we've talked about here tonight, but can I assume that Alderwoman Davis is supportive of this project in her neighborhood?
I would defer to, to staff to answer that. I've not had any conversation. And as I mentioned earlier, at that point, we had requested that this information be supplied in the summariesheets of the presentation. I'll take that. That's unfair to go to Alexa. Yes, Alderwoman Davis is supportive, has introduced the board bill. It's gone much, many ways through the Board of Aldermen.
Yeah, so
will be, okay, sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Well, no, I mean, Director Rowe, so this board bill, so maybe this is a question about process and sorry if I'm, I'm confused, but if, if we're, if this legislation, the ordinance is, is halfway through the Board of Aldermen, what are we doing?
So, good point. We are, we are reviewing something from, from LCRA. We are not reviewing a board bill per se. LCRA actually took this up not very long ago. They sent us to us and we have 30 days to make a comment to it, to make our recommendation and get it back to LCRA. And, and LCRA has to do the mechanics of getting it through the Board of Aldermen and however method they seem appropriate. I'm going to talk about that a little bit more at the end of, of, as we wrap up active business and talk about the next meeting, so.
Okay. I think that's all I have right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Lo. Commissioner Peoples?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vines?
Um, yeah, I was just gonna try to get some clarification as, as, and correct me if I'm wrong. This, this project is looking to be completed in phases. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so a lot of times what we see is these, you know, these, these larger scale projects where Phase One is completed and approved and everything is great and you get all the necessary approvals to complete the project, but for whatever reason, economic changes, changes in certain dynamics, Phase Two, Phase Three, they, they either never come to fruition or they're kind of a dumbed down vision and result of what was initially proposed. And I'm, I'm just wondering, do you have some renderings or any kind of plans of exactly what you intend to build on some of these now parking lots?
We're, we're working on renderings. We have, well, you have the site plan that was shown earlier. But we don't have renderings. We would have them shortly. We're preparing a whole package.
Are there any guarantees or safeguards that you have built into this plan that will ensure that the subsequent phases actually get built? Or is it kind of a wait and see kind of thing? Because a lot of times what we've seen is that developers will, will complete the first phase, the, you know, the, the low hanging fruit and then you know, they'll check out market conditions and then make a call later as to whether they're going to complete the vision.
Well, I, I wouldn't call Phase One on, you know, low hanging fruit. It's, it's a significant undertaking. And it's significant amount of money that's going to go into Phase One. So, I mean, our intention is to do all phases. And we're very interested in that particular area. And just in, in grand in general, we have a, we have a vision, I have a vision for what grand can be from north, north to south. So my, my intention is to complete the whole project. You know, I, I, I don't, I, I don't see why it wouldn't be a success where it is, you know, where, where the location is. So, I mean, yeah, no, I mean, my intention is, is to complete all phases and, and continue developing that area and like other areas we're working on, you know, so.
Right. And, oh, go ahead.
And, and I just wanted to make a comment, you know, stemming from all this other conversation is that out of all the projects we've done here in St. Louis and all our holdings, this is the first time we asked for any kind of incentive from the city. So I would like for you guys to take that into consideration as well. So I, I just thought I would mention that, you know, considering that, you know, yeah, we do hold a vast amount of holdings and, and and, and property in the city, but we've never asked for any kind of help, any kind of incentives. We've renovated many prod, many properties and brought a lot of value to, to a lot of the dilapidated buildings around the city. And we, once have we asked for a tax incentive or any kind of incentive from the city. And, you know, this being the project size that it is, to make the project work is why we're asking for, why we're asking for this incentive, so.
Sure. And I, and I appreciate that. And that's exactly the reason why we're asking the tough questions. And I really do appreciate your commitment to the city and your interest in investing in the city. And I believe in the city too, and I would love to see this happen. But, you know, as a city resident for so long, we've, you know, some of us have become jaded with developers who come and have these grandiose plans and we see only Phase One happen. And then a parking lot or a vacant lot or an overgrown field sitting there for, for years on end after the fact. And it's because it's such a massive undertaking that we're asking these questions and scrutinizing it in this way. And it's really out of respect, you know, to you and your investment and also to the residents of the city and the taxpayers. But I guess, do you, do you have a timeline as to when you might have some renderings for the additional phases?
Yeah, we hope to have our renderings of the actual building next. I believe, so we're working with Gray. Gray's the architect on this. He promised something, you know, next week. So we're, we're waiting on that. We got some revisions today on some of the layouts. And so I'm hoping to have that by the 15th, around the 15th of this month. And we're putting together a whole package, like I said, and, you know, I'd be more than happy to send that to you guys and, and the board, so.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chair? Excuse me, before you go, I have a return question from Alderman Cohn, if you would.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's actually more a point of clarification than a, a question. So specifically, Board Bill 217 that was introduced by Alderwoman Davis that passed out of the HUDs Committee, there is language in that board bill that specifically states that the blighting plan and study have been conducted and approved. So in theory, if this does not pass, the board bill is invalid and/or is, it would need to be held up. You know, it's been my experience in the past that SLDC has a tendency to do an end run around processes sometimes by trying to get these things done quicker. They introduce things down at the Board of Aldermen before they've gone through the SLDC boards and commissions for their appropriate approvals before coming down to the Board of Aldermen. So, yeah, I just want to make sure that you all are aware of that. That the reason I'm bringing it up, it's extremely frustrating and confusing for people when we have language in board bills that say that these blighting plans have been done and they've been approved when in fact they have not been. And Don, you know that this happened when I was Chair of Neighbor Development, because I called both you and Dale out on it specifically. And I thought that you all had committed to do better with respect to that. So I'm, I'm, actually, I, I do have a question. So Don, why is this happening? Why, why are we doing?
I guess I get the floor now, do I? Okay. Like, we get this referred to us from LCRA. They took it up on the 29th of January and they've sent it to us. We have 30 days. We don't get to go back in time. We don't get to go in forward time. We get it when we get it from LCRA. And we have 30 days. It's, it's part of their work to manage the overall timing. There is a desire and allowance in state law that everything can happen simultaneously. And that's one of the things that seems to be happening here. But it is the LCRA that, that helps manage that whole timeline.
So I, I appreciate that, Don. However, the board bill was introduced prior to that and actually passed out of committee prior to that LCRA meeting as well. So we have a board bill that was introduced on January 8th.
But the Planning Commission don't have a board bill. We just have an LCRA request for us to review this.
But Don, the board bill states that LCRA has reviewed and it has been approved for blighting, which is what we are discussing here today, is the blighting of it. And so, and the board bill specifically states that these properties have already been approved for blighting, which it has not been, because that's the decision that we're in fact making tonight. And so, but it's passed out of committee.
It's the recommendation we're making tonight. Yes, you're right, sir.
Thank you. Correct. But we've now passed a board bill out of committee that is factually incorrect because it states that the blighting and the, has already taken place, which has not taken place at this point in time. It's happening as, as we speak.
So I would suggest that you take that up with authors of the board.
Well, which would be SLDC because as you're
I'm not SLDC. Okay. Order, I'm, I'm going to call a point of order at this point. And I do understand
And I do understand and recognize Alderman Cone's question and the conflict that we're running into. And I'm going to somewhat defer back to the board for that question, Alderman Cone. Because if the board is presenting a bill that is not accurate, that would be the place in which I think it should be questioned. Our role as a planning commission is to take what is given to us by LCRA and making our recommendation. I'm not saying right or wrong. I'm simply saying the process is something that's gone to the board. And a and any alderperson has submitted something for that that is not accurate. It would be incumbent on them to call that out, not on this commission to rectify that. And with that, I will recognize Commissioner Boyd for two minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification as well. The Board of Aldermen sometimes pass bills that say approved by ENA, for example. But the bill does not, Alderman Cone is right, the bill is not, you know, legal until ENA actually approves it. This has been a problem for years. It is not the planning department's fault that SLDC sends it over late or what have you and the board bill gets passed before planning commission even hears this. That happens quite frequently and that's something that we need to fix. It's not the planning department's fault. It's it's a flaw in the process and it's something that.
I'm not sure if you cut out or stopped.
But but, you know, that is a board of Alderman issue though. And that's something that we need to fix at the Board of Ald.
Thank you very much with that, Chair, takes. At this point, there have been several statements and questions asked by the full commission. I believe they've all been answered at this point as it relates to the planning portion of that. I would ask Alexa if she would then re review recommendation to the planning commission of what we're asked to do at this moment.
So, PDA staff recommends that the 3601 to 3609 Lindo Boulevard redevelopment area to be declared blighted. Staff also finds that the proposed lighting study and redevelopment plan is in conformity land use plan specialty mixed use area. And PDA staff recommends approval of the proposed lighting study and redevelopment plan.
Okay, thank you. With that, with that, I would entertain a motion from a commissioner to approve the recommendation.
I move that we approve the recommendation.
It's been moved. I heard a second. Who was that from? I'm sorry.
Sorry, Tracy Boas.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Boyd, seconded by Commissioner Boas. With that call for both, please.
Aye.
No.
Commissioner Ban.
Nay.
Commissioner Lo.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Lo.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Vine.
Aye.
Chair Spoh.
Aye.
And it's motion to pass the motion. Senator, aye and two nay.
Thank you. With that, it passes and will not move forward. Let me make a couple of key statements. One is, I do appreciate the insight that we get from Alderman Boyd, Alderman Cone, because that's in their purview to be eyes in that level. I can I appreciate the questions from Bannon and Lo because that's in their purview. And the and the commissioners that sit as residents, it's in their purview to the developers. The questions you get are not meant to be attacks, they're meant to be informative. And if you get them here, you will, as I think Commissioner Cohen said, they will show up at other points. It's simply a place that we recommend you be ready to address those issues and more because you know others will ask these questions. And we are not a rubber stamp commission. We were very clear about that some years ago, that we needed to change our posture and be sure we don't do that, that these questions get asked, even if they're outside of the margin of where we look. We still want to be sure they're questioned and answered. So with that, we wish at this point the best. There are no more action items on the board. Don, I would turn it over to you at this point to move us forward in any other issues.
So so well said, Mr. Chairman. A couple of contextual things I'd like to say is, and when we constituted, reconstituted the planning commission and re actually created yet a good citizen led planning commission. We're required that the head of it be a citizen. So thank you, Earl, for your service for doing that and continuing to do that. We also put on the membership two specific requests from the Board of Aldermen that there be two Aldermen on the commission so that partly what they learn here, because often there's some good depth that it's learned here, they can take back to the to the Board of Aldermen and to those committee hearings. That's important. The sort of thing I've been waiting to say is, and I think Zach may have have left us. But one of the things that staff has been researching, and you heard it in Alderman Boyd, there's been some bad habits that's been developed. Some of it is a function of that Aldermen are in session and out of session and the pace of things to be able to get things approved for development. But one of the things, because we're also getting new staff on board, is I'm asking people to research and tire kick some of our previous projects. We've been also looking at how redevelopment plans are happening and go through in other cities that are in the state same state laws as as us. So there I see that Zach is has is is with us. And that's a way to say that I am working with staff that we're preparing to do a training session for the planning commissioners. And one of the first topics is going to be about redevelopment plans, the timing and some of the things that came up tonight. I think we'll be able to be helpful with that. We'll be able to continue for everybody to be very helpful in their questions. But we'll know what what is most immediately in front of us, what we can advise others. And we hope to do that at the next planning commission meeting. We have a little glitch with Cecilia being out a little bit longer than we wanted. But we will certainly do it, which is a training session, so.
Is that okay? With that, our next meeting is scheduled at this time for March the 3rd. I would ask that all of you and your families be safe. And and we will keep Cecilia and our thoughts and prayers in the process for her family. Again, to the commissioners, I thank you for your support and your spirited debate because we do need it. And we've not just gotten we've gotten past pushing things down the hill just because they're they're downhill. So thank you very much for that. With that, I'll entertain a motion to in the meeting.
So move.
Move to second. I never have a problem getting that in the second.
Commissioner Lo.
Thank you very much and with all of you very much.
Previous role.
Previous role, no call, there's no vote for closing.
Okay.